I'd like to open our Board of Commissioners regular meeting at August 1st, 2024, at 7:13 PM. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner McDonald.
Present.
Commissioner Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Present. Item number four is Mayor's comments. I want to welcome everyone tonight. Make sure everyone speaks loudly and clearly into their microphones so that everyone at home who is joining us from home can hear us. Also, just a little housekeeping. We, I just want to say that I know that, you know, people come and we're all passionate about making sure that Fairview is taken care of and, you know, passionate about different items on the agenda, but we are really going to have to watch. If anyone is, destroys city property during the meeting in the lobby or here, we're going to have to have the police involved. So, I know that sounds weird, but we've had some things happen and, you know, I know that people, you know, it's kind of passionate about different things, but I just want to bring that up so that it's, it's kind of clear that, you know, and, and one thing is the doors. If somebody goes through a door hard and, you know, damages the door, we're going to have to, you know, address that. So, I just wanted to put that out there so that everybody knows because I know that nobody wants, you know, city tax dollars to have to go to fix, you know, things in the city hall. So, anyway, let's move forward and have a great meeting. Item five is approval of the agenda. Yes? I skipped three? Oh, shoot. I'm so sorry. I'm just like, sorry about that.
Great, get to Franklin.
Item number three is prayer and pledge. Sorry. Vice Mayor Butler.
Lord, in the meeting today to cook matters of business, God our hearts and our minds and spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I've already made the mayor's comments, so we'll skip down to item number five is approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item number five passes 5-0. Item number six, citizens' comments.
None tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number seven, public announcements, award and, awards and recognition.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to thank everyone for coming out to the back-to-school bash that we had this past Saturday. I'd like to thank Todd Bratcher and Skylar Polston and then Rachel Jones and Sharon Hall and Commissioner Johnson for assisting with that. We gave out approximately 275 backpacks to kids throughout the day. It was a mad rush in the very beginning, but it was, it was a great turnout. And then our next event is Nature Fest, which is on September 21st. It'll be at Booby Nature Park from 9:00 AM until 4:00 PM, and we're still accepting vendors and sponsors for that event. If you're interested in being a vendor or a sponsor, you can contact me at 615-310-0255. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number eight, staff comments and monthly reports, city manager comments. Mr. Darty?
Thank you, Mayor, board. Not a lot tonight. I just, I just wanted to make you aware that a project we've been working on for well over a year is going to be, is fully updated and I cannot commend our staff enough. I want to put Rachel Jones in the spotlight. She spearheaded this project and your, our municipal code, the final update from MTS is in, and this will be on the next agenda for your vote. We have, we feel like it has been scrubbed and scrubbed and scrubbed the best we can. And one of the, another reason letting you know about this is if, for your review, it is a pretty big document, so I just wanted to let you know to be looking for it. Thank you so much.
Any questions of Mr. Darty from the board? Item number nine is consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Minutes from July 18th, 2024, Board of Commissioners regular meeting.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item number nine passes 5-0. Item 10, old business. Item 10A is Resolution 32-24, a resolution of the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners approving a schedule change for November 2024 meeting dates. That would be my item. The date that I'm asking for a change would be the 21st, and I believe that, of November. I believe that the week of Thanksgiving is not a good plan, so does anyone have a suggestion for?
I'm wondering if, if, if maybe we just only have one meeting that month and just get rid of it entirely since it's holidays and lots of travel and all that. I don't know. Maybe if it's needed, I don't know, but usually that time of year is a little slower, I think.
Is that?
I'm just throwing a suggestion out there. That's all I got. I'm just saying, yeah, but if everyone's okay with it, I'm happy to make a motion on it.
Having one meeting in November and since we've got Thanksgiving.
That's fine. It may be my last meeting, so just cancel it.
Send off. I'm fine with that. I make a motion just to remove.
It would be the November 21st meeting.
The November 21st meeting from our calendar.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item 10A passes 5-0 to remove November 20, uh, November 21st meeting. We will have the meeting on November 7th. Item 11, new business, 11A. Ordinance 2024-13 and ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 5.60 plus or minus acres of property located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Fairview Boulevard and Cumberland Drive, consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 046, parcel 108.05 from RS40 Single Family Residential to CMU Commercial Mixed Use Zoning District. Property owner, S&amp;W Fairview Partners. And if anyone's here to represent, please come forward.
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself. I do not have any correlation with this direct parcel, but I have listing agreements with the property owner on other properties.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Greer?
Mr. Adam Sager with Dell &amp; Associates has submitted on behalf of S&amp;W Fairview Partners a request to rezone the entire 5.6 acre parcel located at the southeast corner of Fairview Boulevard, Highway 100 and Cumberland Drive. The property is currently zoned RS40 Single Family Residential, and the requested zone district is CMU Commercial Mixed Use. The properties to the north, south, and east are zoned RS40 Single Family Residential, and the properties to the west are zoned R20 One and Two Family Residential. The properties to the north, south, and west contain single-family detached residences, and the properties to the east contains a church. Although not directly adjacent to the subject property, additional properties to the south and east contain the Fairview Middle School and Fairview High School campuses. The Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan designated this property as a transition corridor. The Transition Corridor notes appropriate land uses are single-family detached residential, office, and civic institutional. The Transition Corridor classification lists two zone districts as appropriate zoning, and those zone districts are RS40 Single Family Residential and a new district that would permit the adaptive reuse of existing structures and new development with a residential form. There are no existing structures on this property. A new zone district focused on adaptivity, reusing existing buildings or requiring new development to have a residential form has not been adopted at this time. Therefore, the only appropriate zone district available is RS40, which is the current zoning of the property. Given the location of this property at the intersection of two primary roadways and the upcoming intersection improvements adjacent to this property at the Cumberland and 100 intersection, which will include signalization, the applicant feels this property is well-suited for commercial development. Staff investigated the other future land use categories in the general area to determine how the Fairview Forward 2040 designates other properties along Fairview Boulevard located at intersections. The next intersection to the north, Glen Haven Drive, and the next three intersections to the south, Old Franklin Road, King Road, and Westview Boulevard are each surrounded by properties designated as commercial center. Although only a few of the properties contain commercial uses or are zoned commercially, it appears the 2040 plan envisioned commercial uses along smaller intersections along Fairview Boulevard based on the classification of commercial center surrounding all directly adjacent intersections. Given the classifying of these many parcels as commercial center and not the intersection of Fairview Boulevard and Cumberland Drive seems inconsistent. Additionally, the intersection of Fairview and Cumberland will be better suited to handle traffic due to the proposed roadway improvements that will occur as part of an ongoing T-dot project along Fairview Boulevard. Staff recommends a favorable recommendation for this application, and the Planning Commission also recommended this favorably to the Board of Commissioners.
Move for approval. Second.
I just want to say, I mentioned at the Planning Commission meeting, I think this would be a, a perfect place for a child enrichment center. We are short of those out here, and with our growth and, you know, new families moving to the area, I think that would be great. And maybe some type of a coffee shop and then something else where they can drop the kids off and grab their coffee and, you know, or their, you know, whatever, you know, suits the, you know, that area. So, that's just kind of my comments on that, but I'm, I think that's a good opportunity for that area.
Mayor, I have one question.
Yes.
Ethan, you mentioned something about signal, signalization. What is that, is that interior, interior of the project itself? Or is that to help out on the signal of 100 and Cumberland?
Can you clarify your question, Mr. Hall? I'm sorry.
What was the signal, signalization remark that you made?
That, that's the light at 100 and Cumberland.
That would be the T-dot project that is ongoing currently.
Not the project of this particular development.
That is correct. They are only here tonight for a rezoning. Just with having the background knowledge of the T-dot project that is going along Highway 100, we included that in our staff report.
I thought we were fixing to get some help there.
Not tonight.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other comments? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item 11A passes 4-0. Thank you. Item 11B ordinance, sorry. Item 11B ordinance 2024-14, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 37.52 plus or minus acres of property located on 2451 Fairview Boulevard, consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 046, parcel 087.00, from Commercial General to RM8 Pod and RS10 Pod. Property owner, Barkseast LLC. Mr. Greer?
This project before you tonight received a 5-4 vote at the Planning Commission with a negative recommendation for approval. After that vote took place, Mr. Pape and the applicant spoke, Planning Commissioner Pape, and Mr. Pape sent over a letter to myself that states he will be out of town. I'll be out of town Thursday and will not be able to attend the BOC work session for Barkseast, so I wanted to make sure that you were aware of my meetings and discussion with the applicant. They reached out to me after the PC meeting a few weeks ago, a few weeks back, and I met with him last week. My biggest concern with this development was the size of the single-family lots in the rear of the development to assure the best possible transition to the existing uses surrounding the property. My discussions with the applicant focused on the buffer areas surrounding the lots, and based on the advice from their design team, they feel that the buffers must be owned by the HOA and not be part of the lots. I did not take the time to confirm that our code requires that, but it certainly helps to assure that the buffers will be maintained on a regular basis. With the understanding the buffers would not be part of the lots, I asked the applicant to create a chart or exhibit that shows the effective lot sizes, assuming that the buffer areas behind each yard can effectively be used by each owner. Or in other words, how big would the lots be if the buffers were part of the lot areas? He attached that PDF. The good news is that when you look at the effective lot sizes on the current plan, there are effective lots as large as 17,000 square feet, and the average effective lot is just under 10,000 square feet. This exhibit tells me that the effective lot sizes are really close, very close to what I was looking for to provide a good transition to the property to the rear. Based on this information, my concern about the lot sizes is satisfied. I did also ask them, the applicant, to agree to make the buffers truly undisturbed buffers as I do think there are many trees that should be preserved along the boundaries. You can see the discussion back and forth in the email chain below where they agreed to keep them undisturbed as much as possible. I don't think that is enough. I think we should push them to specifically label the buffers as undisturbed. As my email back to the applicant indicates, I would be open to labeling the buffers as undisturbed, providing for some exceptions in highlighted areas where they currently show some grading into the buffers. Those areas are minimal, and I think it would be good, be a good compromise. I know they will still need to do a tree survey and tree save plan later in the process, and this discussion will come up again. But I think it is important to push for the undisturbed buffer areas now as the buffers are the most critical area. Based on the continued discussions with the applicant, the changes they are willing to make to address concerns they have heard from the city, I feel much better about this project moving forward. I wanted to make sure you had all of this information so that you can communicate these continued discussions to the Board of Commissioners at the work session and the Board of Commissioners meeting, since he cannot attend. With Mr. Pape sending that email, theoretically, that could have changed the, the vote to the opposite result, and it could have been before you tonight with a positive recommendation. I'll also note that the Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan classifies the western portion of the property along Fairview Boulevard as commercial corridor. That notes Commercial General as an appropriate zone district. The remaining portion of the property is classified as residential transition neighborhood. That notes RS15, RS8, RS5, RM8 with a pod as appropriate zone districts. The portion of the property designated as commercial corridor is currently zoned Commercial General and will retain that zoning. Also, the portion designated as commercial corridor is not part of the requested pod development, but will remain with and be developed by the current owner. The portion of the property that is requested to be within the pod development is found within the area classified as residential transition neighborhood. The requested zoning for the pod is RS10 Pod and RM8 Pod. The RM8 Zone District with a pod is listed as an appropriate zoning in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. The RS10 Zone District with a pod is not listed as an appropriate zoning. However, more dense zone districts, RS8 and RS5, are listed as appropriate zone districts. So, the RS10 Zone with a pod would produce similar or less dense development than the appropriate zone districts of RS8 and RS5. We do have the applicant here tonight to answer any questions.
If you would please come forward, state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Kevin O'Brien with Cortera 9005 Overlook Boulevard, 37027.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Mayor, if I could, I'd just like to say that we had a really good discussion during the workshop with, with city staff, the board, and the applicant. And with that being said, I realize that the vote from the Planning Commission was 5-4 to not recommend this project to move forward. And Commissioner McDonald brought up a great point about sending it back to the Planning Commission to have them reassess it and get it back to us. And I agree with that. Also, I agree with the fact that they said that this delay could cost them the ability to close on the property, that the property owned, that the contract's running out. So, what I'm prepared to do this evening is make a motion to pass this on the first reading and take executive action from this board to put it on the Planning Commission meeting for, I believe, the 13th. Would that be correct?
That is correct.
And then it would be back to us on the 15th for second reading.
Commissioner Johnson?
I think that's Planning Commission meeting.
We could not have it back that soon. We would have, we have a 15-day public notification period that would have to occur for the public hearing. So, the earliest they could come back would be September 5th, which would be their next scheduled meeting anyways.
Then we'll come back on September the 5th, but we'll go ahead and ask for that to be added to the Planning Commission meeting for the 13th then. And then that way, the Planning Commission can take all the facts, new plans, everything, get back to us, and we'll make an informed decision, whether it's pass, pass it or deny it on, at the second reading. But that way, we get, I think, accomplish what we were trying to do, let the Planning Commission come back and, and give us their thoughts, and then we'll move forward accordingly. So, that is my motion.
Second.
Want to restate the motion to make sure it's clear for the record.
Yeah, I need to be a little clearer. Yeah.
All right, my motion will be to.
Let me, let me, let me take a shot. So, it's a motion to approve on first reading is, is the, and a motion to send it back to the Planning Commission for review and reconsideration.
That is correct.
Okay. That's been first by Mr. Johnson and second by Mr. Hall. Correct? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I just want to be clear for the applicant. I think this is the, personally, I think this is the best course of action. I think if you guys had a conversation with Jeff or Mr. Pape that changed his perspective on the, on, on his decision, I think it would probably be beneficial for everyone to hear that conversation. But personally, for this being first reading, I will be voting yes in favor to move this forward, send it to the Planning Commission. But I want it to just, there'll be a future discussions for me, or I'm still have opposition personally with the, the road sizes on the interior. I just don't want to send mixed signals thinking, oh, we changed his mind. It's a yes to the motion to move it back to the Planning Commission, and we can talk about that at a later date, or further talk about it now if you'd like.
Patrick, I'm a little unclear. Is that a sep, separating, or is that?
The way this motion was made, it's a two-part motion.
Okay.
I think if you approve, then you're approving both parts of the motion, and if you say no, then you're denying both parts of the motion.
Okay. So, there's not either or. It's.
Not the way the motion was made and seconded.
I just wanted to clarify that, so.
Can I get further clarification? How, it's the first reading, though, so that's, it's kind of a moot yes, correct? As far as the approval of the actual project goes, since it will be discussed and voted on a second time at the second reading.
Because it's a rezoning, it requires, it requires two, two readings and two votes, and so this is the first reading?
Yeah.
And so it will have to be, it will have to be voted on again?
With a public hearing.
With a public hearing.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else have comments before I make mine?
Mayor, I'll just say, I, I don't feel that it meets the subrags. I don't feel like it meets the intent of the 2040 plan and the plans and the visions that we need, and so I'm not in favor for it as it sits currently.
Anyone else? Okay. I had a lengthy conversation with Mr. O'Brien and discussed several things with him. Apologize for being late to the workshop. Had to take care of some issues with my mom. But I do, I felt like my conversation with Mr. O'Brien, I, I was fully aware of what's, you know, what I needed to know from that. So, I don't think the workshop would have changed my mind. I just want to say that I appreciate all of you being willing to adjust this project several times after you've been asked to do multiple things. I am encouraged that the driveways have been increased to 25 feet. That will accommodate the largest vehicle without overlapping sidewalks. I am encouraged that you made the single-family lots larger, even though it cost you 18 lots. I appreciate the reduction that was done previously by 20 townhomes. And I do like that you've done an, or you're going to do an evergreen buffer around the project to buffer it from neighbors. I will state, as I stated before, I hear the community, and I would encourage that, you know, this is two years out, but I would encourage the product to be sold and not rented. So, I just will put that out. So, those are, those are my comments.
Mayor, just for clarification, the, the lot sizes didn't increase on, from what was submitted to Planning Commission. Still the same thing, correct?
Per Commissioner Pape's definition of the effective intent, they did.
Well, one thing, a long time ago when this project came up, we recommended to meet with the community members around that area. And I don't know if that ever took place. We still get questions and calls about it, but I think we may be past that point now. But it would have been critical to kind of meet with the people that border and talk to them and locate the area. If they call me and they're on board, maybe we look at it, but I just think, I'm worried that section's going to be poorly planned and not, not accurate, you know, or not function correctly.
I give you full permission to provide any of them my contact information. I'd, I'd love for them to reach out and talk to me.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I also want to point out that this is the first reading. For everyone who's in the audience, there will be a second reading. If, if this passes and then there will be a second reading where the, we have a public hearing for the community to be able to speak, and the applicant will be here. You'll be able to speak and make your comments at that time. Anything else? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. I'm sorry, 4-1. 4-1.
Thank you, Commissioners. We look forward to continued conversation.
Thank you. Item 11C, Resolution 37-24, a resolution awarding the bid to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Tennessee Valley Paving Company Incorporated. bidder, Tennessee Valley Paving Company Incorporated, for the resurfacing of city streets. City Manager Tom Darty.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. This is an exciting project. It consists of eight mini projects, street projects that we've been needing for a long time. Probably the biggest paving endeavor the city has, has taken on up to date. I, Tennessee Valley Paving came in substantially lower than the other two bids, and the city staff, we've always had good results, and they've done quite a bit of work for the city in the past, and we rec, we asked that you approve this company to do this project just, just for citizens and for anybody else. We're hoping to get started in September and finish up by the holidays on all projects. Thank you.
Move for approval.
Second.
This is very exciting for our citizens. I know that there are several streets out there that need paving, and to get this started, and this is Phase 1, and then we'll move on to more streets on our second go-round. I'd like to list the streets so we have them for the record that we, from this list I have here. The, the ones in the first go-round are Chester Road, Horn Tavern Road, Old Nashville Highway, Crowcut Road, Northwest Highway, Glen Haven Street, Taylor Road, Chessington Drive, Shepton Park, Kempton Court, Aidenborough Drive, Kinsham Drive, Armore Way, Armore Court, Damsel Court, Damsel Lane, Nottingham Drive. So, I'm, I just want to say that I'm super excited about us getting started with the paving project. I know that everyone's wanting this to happen, so... Any other comments from the board?
I would just ask if can we have staff send us the list of those streets just to have it? I tried writing them down.
Oh, you have it.
Oh, it's in here. Okay. Perfect.
It's on page 11.
Thank you.
Or, no, sorry. It's 11C, but it's, yeah, it's, oh, actually, the last page, the last page of your...
Perfect. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may just ask timeframe, timing, is there a schedule?
Yeah, he was, I think Tom said...
Open to start in September and be complete by the holidays.
By, completed by December.
And just, and just to reiterate, what the city manager said is 1.9 million, probably more than we spent on paving roads in 30 or 40 years. So, it's a big, big deal. It's exciting.
Yes, and then the other companies, very qualified, very, the Tennessee Valley has, they, they produce their own product, and it, they're, they can, they can do it cheaper.
Competitive.
Doesn't hurt that they do it right here in Fairview.
All right. Any other comments? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11C passes 5-0. Item 12, Round Table, Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to thank all the city employees and all the Police Department, Fire Department, all the way down the line. Everybody does such a good job for us. Anyway, that's the main thing, is to keep those in, in our thoughts and prayers all the time. Congratulations to Keith on his 25-year anniversary today. He's been a blessing to have in this town. He's done such a good job for us with our park at Bowie, Bowie Park. My next thing is, is I've handed out with your name on it, this is one thing that I've been trying to get done for a number, number of years now, is to get the centerway of Highway 100 at the Cloverleaf in 96 possibly taken care of. I have met with Mike McClanahan with the State Beautification Department of TDOT. He has since sent me this little brief letter, and it's there for y'all to look over. And there is also a list of preferred shrubs and, which I hope is easily maintained, but anyway, with not being 30 feet wide, we can not put the redbud trees that I wanted there. He has looked at these weeping redbuds that's here on the property of City Hall and is looking into the fact, maybe they might work at certain areas of the, of the median up there. That would be up to them, but in order to have a tree that would be more than four inches in cap, caliper, you would have to have guardrails and 30-foot wide median that we don't have, and we don't want to spend the money on putting a guardrail all the way up through there. It'd just be that much more to have to maintain. I am going to take this to the Parks and Landscape Board at their next meeting and see their thoughts on it, and then I just wanted y'all to get an idea of where the state stood on this, since it is their property, and they would have to give us permission to do anything that would be required up there. Personally, since we can't get the redbud trees that I would like to see put in up there, is to eliminate everything except for the cedar-looking green things and the grasses that are up there, and eliminate them others that's up there. We might could utilize some of these here to plant, and then Parks and Landscape Board will give us an idea on that. But I would just want to get, get this to y'all and let you know where I'm coming from and where the state's coming from as far as at least beautifying it to a better point than where we're at right now, because it does, the wild trees come up through some of the stuff, and it's not easily maintained because of the water problem that we have up there and severe, severe rainy, rainy season. So, anyway, if y'all have any questions for me at this point, I'd be glad to take them to the Parks and Landscape Board and see where we can go from there to see if we can make it as least maintain, other than the grass cutting, and take it from there. If y'all have any questions, I feel, be more than happy to try to do my best to answer them for you.
I really appreciate Wayne, you putting this together. It helps to see all of this in writing, and I look forward to this coming Monday, correct? At 7 o'clock at Triangle School, open to the public for the Parks and Landscape?
Yes, ma'am.
Meeting. If anybody would like to join and find out more information about this. Anyone have any questions of Wayne right now? Okay. We'll probably have more questions of you as we move forward with this.
Thank you.
Mr. McDonald?
Happy back-to-school week next week for everybody, for all the kiddos in the community. Getting into fall, which is always fun, changing things up. Summer's great, but fall's fun, too. Other than that, I got nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Commissioner Johnson? Nothing tonight?
Nothing tonight. Election results.
Are they in? Vice Mayor Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick shout-out to the World Series event that was, I think, two weekends ago. It's kind of a blur, but it, just like the 4th of July event, you just kind of see yourself looking around, seeing everyone and everyone, all hands on deck, trying to do things to help, to do things for Fairview, to support Fairview, to showcase Fairview, and it was a special event. Kelly Holler's in the room, special shout-out to him. He was constantly working on the fields and things. At one point, looked around at a Fairview game, and we were all there watching. Just the, the community sense and feel is special during events like that. And big shout-out to Keith hiding behind the glass, 25 years, that's special, that's awesome. Thank you for your service and your continued service for Fairview. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. I also want to thank Keith for his service. This is his actual, today is his actual anniversary day, but I do want to let everyone know that we have something special planned for him at the next Board of Commissioners meeting, so make sure to attend. Also, you know, we didn't want to do it tonight because we had so much going on tonight with the election and, you know, our beer board and our workshop and our meeting. We want him to have kind of his special time, so we will be doing that at our next board meeting, just thanking him and, and just, you know, giving him his special celebration of his 25 years. It's not always been easy for him, and he has just pushed through the hard times and, and done really well, and taking care of this wonderful park that we're so blessed to have, and he just makes sure that it's completely taken care of. And Keith, we appreciate everything you do. So, everybody be here next meeting so that we can all celebrate Keith. I do want to ask that we contact developers and make sure the roads, I was contacted by some citizens, stay clean of dirt and debris. So, I'm just going to ask you, Ethan, to, you know, just make sure that they, as they do construction, to keep the roads clean. I just had the best time at the Diamond Softball World Series, you know, a couple weeks ago. It was, it was amazing. We had 52 teams, 800 girls, all of their families, and there may have been a glitch, but I didn't see it. And a lot of us were there, you know, bored, volunteering and being there the whole week, so we saw, you know, just families who, you know, several of them said they'd like to move to Fairview, that that's how our citizens treated these families and made them feel welcome to our city. And I had comment after comment of just how beautiful our city is, how accommodating our citizens are, how polite our citizens were. Amanda and Shannon worked so hard, and all the FRA Board, the Diamond World Series Organization, the girls did such a great job. Our U6 girls took home the championship, and we had, you know, U8 runner-up and U15 runner-up. So, we're going to have at a future meeting, BOC meeting, we're going to let the FRA Board get with the coaches and the, the girls, and we're going to pick a night, we're going to have them here with their trophies and their plaques, and we're going to celebrate their accomplishment. You know, teams come in and they've won in their, you know, their state. They come here, and we're the host team, so we're not expected to be the, the best out there, but we had such a great showing, and it just shows how our coaches and parents in our community are so supportive of the girls and, and their softball program. Kelly probably was out there 18 hours a day, I'm not joking, taking care of the fields. It was not easy. They brought in a lot of extra dirt. I don't know what kind of product that was, but it does have to stay wet, and it does have to be drugged to keep it nice and smooth. So, Kelly was out there and his crew monitoring those fields, making sure that they were the best they can be, and I know it took a little time to recover from the heat and the time that they all put in making sure those fields were pristine for this event. Kelly, do you want to say anything, or Kelly's just, he's very humble, but I'm just going to say it for him. I appreciate everything that you did, and, you know, the coaches and the players and the families, they're, you know, all the families, they know how hard you work. You know, these are Williamson County fields, but we have a team of volunteers here that don't get paid a dime, and some of them don't even have players out there, and they make sure that our fields are taken care of, and it's for the girls and, and, you know, the boys, so, but it's, it's for the players and, and to make sure that they have what they need. So, Kelly, I appreciate you. Yes. We, last Tuesday, this past Tuesday, we had breakfast with the mayors. There were probably about 400 people in attendance, and it was, the reason I'm bringing it up is Christie, Patrick, help me with her last name, it's ransom. She is the city attorney, I'm sorry, the Williamson County Attorney, and she was with us, Ethan, myself, and Patrick, Tom as well, at some meetings. We have for two years been involved with the Urban Growth Boundary. It is a lot to process, a lot to explain. She did a great job doing this in what, like about 30 minutes? She, she condensed it, there are slides, and she put it in just layman's terms where everybody can kind of understand that process and what was, what, you know, everyone went through. So, if you want to view that, it's a link from the Williamson County website to do that. I just want to remind everyone that we, our kids are starting school on Monday, and just please be aware that there's going to be children out in the, you know, at the bus stops, and the buses are going to be, you know, moving through the town. I want to make sure that everyone is conscious of, we have rules and regulations on parking in cul-de-sacs. You can't do that. That's illegal. You cannot park in front of fire hydrants, and you cannot block people's driveways. We have city ordinances that state that. This is a police matter. If, I'm going to let Ethan just say a quick word about who to call if this is going on so that you can get help.
Just to note, the Fairview Municipal Code, Title 15, Article 604, parking is prohibited on a sidewalk in front of a public or private driveway within 15 feet of a fire hydrant, within 20 feet of a driveway entrance to the fire station, on the roadway side of any vehicles stopped or parked at the edge of curb, or along the sides of and within any cul-de-sac located within the corporate boundaries of the city of Fairview. If you do see and have an issue, please contact the non-emergency dispatch phone number for the Fairview Police. The phone number is 615-799-2431.
And I do, I do want to point out, this is a police matter, not a city matter, so if there is an issue, please call the non-emergency number, and our officers will see to this situation. So, with that...
Mayor, I'd like to interrupt.
Yes, go ahead.
I forgot to ask something a while ago, and I'd like to be absent at the Town Hall meeting on the 29th, if at all possible. That's a 20-year anniversary of me winning the Park Pleasure World Grand Championship at Shelbyville Walking Horse Celebration. Several people have asked me to be in attendance.
Absolutely. What a great accomplishment.
So, I just want to see if it's okay with the board that I missed that night.
Yes, so, we will, we will have a Town Hall meeting at the end of the month on the 29th at 7 o'clock.
And we'll have it in Shelbyville.
And we're going to have it in Shelbyville with Wayne.
Come along.
Well, congratulations, Wayne. That, that was a huge accomplishment, and I know that you're...
I still have the same horse. I'm still...
Oh, my goodness, the same horse.
Yeah, same one.
That's great.
Thank you. Sorry I missed it a minute ago.
All right. Anything else? I'll, as I always say, please help us keep Fairview beautiful. Let's pick up trash and not throw it out. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.